Good evening. May I have a mover and seconder to call the meeting to order, please? Deputy Cabral and councillor Garwood, that the special meeting of the council of the township of Springwater of October 8th, 2025 come to order at 6:30 PM. All those in favour, and that has carried. Given tonight's attendance, please note that there are three emergency exits available. One beside our planning desk, which is directly behind you, one behind council's desk, which is right here, and then the main doors. Hope I had covered that enough, Chief Kirk? And the aisleways, yes. And to keep the aisleways open, please. At this time, councillor, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Not seeing any. May I have a mover and seconder to call the public meeting to order, please? Councillors Fisher and more, that this public meeting of the council is held under section 1733 of the municipal act for the proposed boundary adjustment called be called to order at 6:31 PM. All those in favour, and that has carried. Welcome to this public meeting of Springwater Township, held under section 1733 of the municipal act to give the public an opportunity to express their views in regard to the proposed boundary adjustment. The first portion of this meeting is to present the boundary adjustment. Following the public will be given an opportunity to make oral submissions in person or through Zoom application. All comments should be addressed through the chair. Member of council will be listening to the public comments receiving during the public meeting. There is no decision or debate on this item tonight. Oral and written submissions will be included in the meeting's minutes and form part of the public record, including the name and address of the speaker as information collected under the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection Privacy Act. The minutes of the meeting will be posted to the township's website and will be forwarded to the ministry, the city of Barry and the county of Simcoe. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to remind all attendees to please turn off your cell phones or switch them to silent mode to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly and without interruption. I will now call upon the clerk to confirm notice of the meeting and the dates to which notice was given.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Notice of this public meeting was mailed on the 19th day of September 2025 to the 81 properties affected by the proposed boundary adjustment. Notice was published in the Springwater News, Barry Today and the Barry Advance. Notice was posted on the township's digital sign, website and circulated using the township's social media accounts through paid advertising. Notice of the meeting was also broadcast on local radio stations. A special thank you to our local CRAs for also advertising the public meeting on their community signs.
And at this time, I will call upon CEO Ainsworth. We didn't plan that. To provide us a brief overview of the boundary adjustment.
Good evening. My name is Renee Ainsworth. I'm the interim CAO here at the township. I'd like to thank everyone for attending in person and virtually for this public meeting regarding the city of Barry proposed boundary adjustment. Next slide, please. This public meeting is being held under section 173 of the municipal act to allow residents and interested parties the opportunity to provide comments relating to a final offer from the city of Barry regarding a proposed boundary adjustment framework. This is also referred to as a restructuring agreement. All comments received in writing prior to the meeting and verbal comments heard at this meeting will form part of the public record. These comments will also be shared with the city of Barry, the county of Simcoe and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It's important to note that no decision will be made at this public meeting. Council's consideration of the proposed boundary adjustment will take place at the October 15th regular meeting of council. Next slide, please. Over the past 18 months, the township, along with all other involved parties, have been participating in discussions facilitated by the Office of the Provincial Land and Development Facilitator. Facilitated discussions are now complete and a draft boundary adjustment framework agreement has been released for review. Details regarding the framework agreement will be provided later in this presentation. Next slide. Throughout this process, consultants have been engaged to complete various studies, including a joint land needs assessment and related technical analysis. The technical memos outlining the results of these studies can be found on the township's website and are also included on this evening's agenda for review. To note, the city of Barry held their public meeting on September 29th. The county of Simcoe will be holding their public meeting on October 15th and the township of Oromadonte will hold their public meeting on October 15th. Next slide, please. And I will now turn it over to Director Russell.
Thank you, CAO Ainsworth, and good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Russell. I am the director of planning here at the township of Springwater. I'm going to walk you through three components of the city's proposal, being the community residential lands, the employment lands and the non-developable lands. Next slide, please. Regarding the residential land needs, based on the consultant technical studies, Hemsden has determined that the city of Barry has a land need of approximately 500 hectares for community or residential lands. Of those 500 hectares, the city has proposed that 283 hectares would come from the Springwater township, while the balance would come from Oromadonte. While the lands are proposed to be transferred to the city of Barry, no immediate land use changes or rezonings are proposed to occur as part of the boundary adjustment. Next slide, please. Regarding employment land, Hemsden has determined that the city of Barry has a need of approximately 300 hectares of employment lands. The city has proposed that 313 hectares of township lands be transferred for this purpose. Again, no land use changes are proposed to occur as part of the boundary adjustment. Next slide. Totalling the community and employment lands together with the environmental and non-developable lands, the city's proposal represents 1,216 hectares of land from Springwater Township. This proposal is split into two main areas, the eastern portion around Little Lake and the western portion in the Sunnydale and Wilson Drive area. The proposal represents a total of 81 properties with 42 residential dwellings. Next slide, please. The western portion of lands being 26 parcels of land are comprised of consolidated agricultural operations, aggregate resource deposits and the Anne Street private airport. There are two key additional points I'd like to make about this slide. The first being that along Miller Drive, there are a number of lots that are currently half in the city of Barry and half in the township. Those would be transferred fully to the city of Barry. The second being that there are 14 homes along the eastern side of Dobson Road, which are currently serviced through the centre of Vesper settlement area. These 14 homes would stay with Springwater Township. Next slide. Regarding the eastern area, the eastern portion of lands are comprised of 55 parcels of land represented by two golf courses, small residential clusters in the St Vincent and Little Lake Lane area, environmentally constrained lands around Little Lake and agricultural lots east of Highway 400. Next slide. Regarding the city of Barry properties, within the eastern Little Lake portion, the city of Barry currently owns nine properties totaling 293 hectares of land area. These properties are largely environmentally constrained and are proposed to be included in a land conservation trust. These lands are currently exempt from taxation based on their environmental status. Next slide. Regarding agricultural impact, the township has a total agricultural land base of approximately 26,000 hectares of designated agricultural land. The lands subject to the city's proposal represent a total of 2.3% of the township's total agricultural base. The city has proposed a 20-year tax phase-in for agricultural properties such that agricultural operations may continue in the city of Barry. Next slide, please. And thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Harvey to speak on the engineering and servicing.
Good evening. My name's Trevor Harvey and I'm director of public works and infrastructure. Next slide, please. This particular slide speaks to the framework agreement and the cross-border servicing that the city of Barry is offering. This particular cross-border servicing is related only to the areas along the Bayfield Street corridor, specifically the MZO lands, which are Sadlin and Remington, and they're all along the Highway 26 Bayfield Street corridor. It should be noted that the MZO lands and properties in that particular, the Bayfield Street corridor, they'll require further submissions by the developers to really solidify the actual demands for servicing. The framework agreement sets out the basis for such matters as servicing capacity, the timelines of servicing, the locations of connections, the overall costs and the associated water and wastewater rates that would be levied on those lands. The agreement must adhere to the principle of full cost recovery by the city of Barry to provide the servicing along with the ongoing operation and maintenance costs. The agreement will also see the lands remain in Springwater and property taxes on these lands will be collected by Springwater. The city of Barry, it speaks to their, one of the concepts is their development charges rates will apply to this area. The slide speaks to some of the preliminary options for cost recovery. One option on the slide would be for the city of Barry to collect DCs for the hard costs and such as water and sewer. The township of Springwater would collect development charges for the soft services such as libraries, fire and fire protection. This agreement will be brought back to council at some point in the future for consideration once all of the details are further examined. Next slide.
All right. Good evening. My name is Greg Bedard and I'm the director of finance and treasury with the township of Springwater. Moving to the compensation proposal and next slide, please. The city of Barry is to compensate the township of Springwater at a rate of $15,000 per developable acre of land. Environmental consultants were retained by the city of Barry to determine the land area that is developable and for which the per acre rate would apply to. Further and in addition to the per acre rate, the city of Barry is to provide the township of Springwater with $850,000 for economic development initiatives. Lastly, the city of Barry is to provide cross-border servicing for key township of Springwater projects within the Bayfield Street corridor. Moving to the next slide. The compensation calculation details are as follows. The total land area in the final offer from the city of Barry is about 12,000 hectares or 3,005 total acres. Netting out area that is considered not developable, such as road right-of-way, lands owned by the city of Barry and other non-developable lands as determined by the consultants, the resulting total of developable acres is 1,472. When we apply the per acre rate of $15,000, the total compensation for developable land is $22,080,000. In adding in $850,000 for economic development, the total compensation increases to $22,930,000. Moving to the next slide, this slide outlines the payment schedule for which compensation is to flow from the city of Barry to the township of Springwater. The payment schedule proposes that all financial compensation will be paid over a five-year term. With respect to the compensation for the boundary adjustment lands, the township of Springwater will receive a lump sum payment of $5 million on January 1st, 2026. The remaining boundary adjustment land compensation will be paid in five equal installments of 3.416 million, with the first payment commencing on July 1st, 2026 and the remaining four payments occurring on January 1st of 2027 through 2030. With respect to the $850,000 for economic development, this compensation is to be paid in five equal installments of $170,000 to be paid on January 1st, 2026 through 2030. Moving to the next slide, this slide outlines the property tax implications of the boundary adjustment. In total, 81 properties in the township of Springwater are proposed to move to the city of Barry. This will result in approximately $158,000 of lost township of Springwater taxation revenue and approximately $107,000 of lost county of Simcoe taxation revenue. However, cross-border servicing unlocks economic developments and additional taxation revenue opportunities for both the township and the county. Lastly, for those 81 impacted properties, the property tax increases are proposed to be phased in. This includes 20-year phase-in for agricultural lands and five-year phase-in for all other lands. Moving to the next slide, this concludes the financial aspect of my presentation and I'll move over to CAO Ainsworth to discuss next steps.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, all comments received will form part of the public record. At its regular meeting of October 15th, council will be presented with the final offer from the city of Barry for consideration. Once considered by all parties, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing will consider the proposal and determine appropriate actions. Mayor Coghlan, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, CEO Ainsworth. Before we do continue, if you do have an empty seat beside you, there is quite a few people standing at the back, so I'll just take a quick minute here to make sure that we can... Do you have an empty seat beside you? We have a couple in the front, if anybody wants to join the front row. We'll just take a minute here to make sure that we're comfortable. At this time, I will turn to our clerk. Has the clerk's department received any written submissions in response to the notice of public meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. There have been 11 items of correspondence received for this public meeting. From Mark Dion in an email dated September 21st, 2025, Leah Lacour Saint Louis and Scott Woods of 307 Miller Drive in an email dated September 23rd, 2025. SCS Consulting Group Limited on behalf of the Midhurst Landowners Groups in a letter dated October 1st, 2025. Derek Wills of 11... Norretta? Norretva? Norretva? Street in an email dated October 5th, 2025. Salvatore Catalino operating as Landings of Willow Creek, owner of 424 Penitanguishing Road in an email dated October 6th, 2025. Vanessa Catalino in an email dated October 6th, 2025. Andrea Norton of 38 Park Trail in an email dated October 6th, 2025. Davies Howe LLP on behalf of the Midhurst Landowners Group in a letter dated October 6th, 2025. Davies Howe LLP on behalf of the Midhurst Landowners Group in a second letter dated October 6th, 2025. John and Amanda Geist of Hillsdale in an email dated October 8th, 2025. And Darlene Duker of 308 Miller Drive in an email dated October 8th, 2025. All pieces of correspondence can be found on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Marshall. We will now move on to the public comment portion of the public meeting. A time limit of five minutes will be given to each speaker. A timer will be displayed on the screen as a visual of how much time you have left remaining. It is recommended that the groups designate a single spokesperson to represent their organisation in order to accommodate everyone. Once the five minutes is up, the mics will turn off and we will move and invite the next speaker to the podium. Those not registered in advance to make a comment at the meeting will be provided an opportunity to do so, once all registered participants have had the opportunity to speak. And at this time, we'll move to our first, and I will call upon Alex Lusti.
Good evening. My name is Alex Lusti. I'm a lawyer and partner at Davies Howe. Our address is 425 Adelaide Street West, Toronto. And this evening, I'm appearing for the 10 members of the Midhurst Landowners Group. You have our September 22nd letter, our two October 6th letters, which explain that this group opposes the annexation because there's no need for it. Springwater will be ready in time to accommodate growth and this annexation process is inherently flawed. And if you'll let me explain, first looking at the land needs evidence. In December 2024, it was concluded that Barry has enough employment land to 2051 and annexation would not help them meet their short-term gap. That fact does not support annexation. And though it's unclear why, this summer, the timeline was extended from 2051 to 2061. And the theory is that by then, 300 hectares of employment land might be needed for Barry. And much is uncertain from now until 2061, but one thing's for sure. There's no rush at all to this annexation. In fact, the 2061 timeline will give Barry lots of time to service its south end employment lands to help it meet its short-term gap. Now let's look at housing. When it comes to housing, Springwater and Barry are in the same market. That means a shortfall in Barry will be met by Springwater and the surrounding municipalities. You take that together and there's no immediate need for this annexation, particularly when steps are underway to plan for growth in Springwater. So since February of this year, there's been intensive growth management, planning, economic, servicing, environmental, agricultural, you name it, studies done to support a Midhurst expansion. That's been done with the cooperation of the Landowners Group. And what those studies indicate is that it's feasible, cost-effective, logical and viable to do that expansion. Meanwhile, as one of our October 6th letters explains, the engineering work done through this process is unreliable. It didn't even consider that Midhurst expansion. It applies inconsistent assumptions between Springwater and Barry, which changes the results. And it assumes a zero cost somehow for water and wastewater treatment upgrades that will be needed by Barry. It's unavoidable. So the Midhurst expansion is an achievable way to keep incredible value in Springwater and in this county. And if the Barry annexation proceeds, Springwater loses that value and it loses the control it needs to shape its own community. And as I work towards the end here, I want to comment on the process, okay? This process, from where I stand, has made it hard to get good information, okay? Like that the strong mayor's powers are not available for employment land. It's not available when you've got a jurisdiction decision and it's not available when development is anticipated before the best before date in the provincial regulation, which is 2031. Okay? So if this process feels off, it's because it is, and I looked into this a little bit. So this process was developed in the mid-1990s. And the point of it was to reduce the number of rural municipalities in Ontario. At that time, there were 815. Today, there's 444. It was created by this thing called the Savings and Restructuring Act, and the idea was pretty simple. Accomplish tax savings by making it easier to eliminate administrative duplication within and between counties. The process is a financial management tool. It is not a growth management tool. And to maintain the scope of this legislation, certain restructuring types were prohibited, and they're set out in a regulation that still exists today. And one of those prohibited types of restructuring is any type of restructuring that results in any part of an upper tier municipality, like the county, not being part of a local municipality, which would be Springwater. It's prohibited. So if this annexation occurs, Simcoe County, who's an upper tier, will lose part of Springwater, which is a local municipality. This restructuring type was never contemplated and it's still prohibited under the law. And so given that, given the prohibition, quite frankly, this process is unexplainable. Thank you.
At this time, we... We have our... Our mics only go up so high, so as the chamber gets louder, so will the feedback. So I will request that we do refrain from cheering and jeering through this process. Our next speaker is John Spring.
My name is John Spring. I come from 2438 County Road 92, Elmville, Ontario. Around the year 2005, the provincial government wanted regional growth in Springwater Township to go from 18,000 people to 24,500 people under their Places to Grow policies in Schedule 7 of that document. Years later, the government decided that they wanted to increase the number by 28,000 more people in Springwater or 10,000 homes by introducing the Midhurst Secondary Plan. Consultants, planners and developers argued that the province needed to look at the housing market as regional and not as individual municipalities. The Midhurst Secondary Plan was approved on the basis that Barry would soon run out of land for future housing. The Midhurst Secondary Plan and other projects in Innisville were formulated to fill that void. In other words, the region and local municipalities would absorb the needs of the region and not just one municipality. How did we get from a regional marketplace approach to now only considering Barry's specific needs? Furthermore, judging from the events that have taken place in the last 18 months or so, it appears to Springwater residents and the majority of Springwater council that Springwater Township needs have not been considered at all. If Barry takes land from Springwater Township and projects in Springwater fail to reach their full numbers, what will developers do that have unfinished and unpopulated projects? I am afraid that the stalling or slowing of previously approved Springwater plans such as the MSP will bankrupt the Springwater Township. Who will the developers sue when their long-term planned projects come to a halt because of a wholesale change from a region to a single municipality approach? If Barry does take land from Springwater Township, Springwater will have to consider cutting back, delaying or scrapping major projects such as multimillion dollar libraries and arenas that are planned. Our population will be much smaller as well as our property tax base and we simply cannot afford them. Another aspect that must be looked at at this time is Barry's taxes are much higher than ours. I think it would be safe in saying that Barry taxes are 35 to 50% more per capita than Springwater's property taxes. By taking over land in Springwater, Barry is shrinking our tax base. This will trigger a large tax increase in Springwater. What this will do is eliminate the huge tax advantage that Springwater enjoys now with Barry. Barry is eliminating competition from neighbouring townships attracting development with lower property taxes and developmental fees. This would be considered smart business in Barry, however, it would be considered poor business in Springwater. It is not a hard business principle to grasp. Why have certain people on our council not considered it? So here is a likely scenario that will surely develop. Barry has offered Springwater Township next to nothing for land they want to take. They will pay us with the extra money that they pick up from the annexed lands with property taxes and developmental fees. In other words, they will pay us using the lands that we already have in our township. Why would we not take a page from their playbook and do exactly what they are planning to do? We would be able to control our development and enjoy any benefits that flow from it. Why would anyone consider anything other than only Springwater developing Springwater land? I would like to remind people of what happened to Vesper Township when Barry did the same thing to them in the early 90s. Barry took their high-value land, in other words, their higher property tax lands, and the Ontario government gave Vesper $750,000 for compensation. That involved all the lands north of Kundal's Road to the current Barry city limits, including all the retail developments and the Georgian Mall, which at the time represented 40% of the Vesper tax base. This amount of money handcuffed Vesper to the point that they had to seek a partnership with an adjoining township. Plus, in this case, a new township was formed and this township is what we call Springwater Township today. Are people willing to take the same chance, letting the same thing happen again? $750,000 was an insult to every Vesper resident for the value of the land they lost to Barry. We... Will we let history repeat itself? This issue is so important to Springwater's future that any councillor on the Springwater council, including the mayor, do not have the moral authority to make a decision themselves. This issue must be put to the general public in Springwater with a referendum happening at the time of the next Springwater Township election. Only then will anyone have the moral authority to act. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Douglas, Mike Douglas of 746 St Vincent Street.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Annexations have occurred many, many times throughout Ontario for many, many years and most have gone through a similar uncomfortable public process. We've got a number of folks... We've got a number of folks in Springwater who are totally in favor of this and can't wait for it to happen. We've got a number of folks here who are totally opposed to it and want it to disappear forever. Like most things in our current society, these sides are highly polarized. They're angry and they're anxious. All residents, all property owners, in fact, all taxpayers, all voters of Springwater are not equally as well informed about the annexation processes that are possible. Municipalities in Ontario have much less autonomy than many of us think. And definitely much less autonomy than many of us would like to have. The province could simply mandate a decision here, and we'd all be forced to live with it or leave. Any outcome is going to harm some and benefit some others. So our council is in a very, you folks, in a really, really, really tough spot. There is no smooth win for everybody. So that means what we really, really need here is good, clear, direct leadership from our council. In this particular council, I speak to you as a group, not as individual people, because I don't know you individually. But this particular council could not be further away from that if they tried. And it's sad. So my perspective is this, annexation is happening by default or by design. I would rather get the best possible outcome for Springwater by negotiating wisely. Some folks on this council seem to be intent on fighting one another rather than pulling together for a common good. And during this term of council specifically, every issue, and I watch a lot of council meetings, every issue seems to be divided by a four-three vote. That tells me that this group of people is a dysfunctional council. And that means you're not doing your job for whatever reason. Good governance and good governing require objectivity, and I don't see enough of that. I see personal battles. I see selfish and childish behavior. I see three members of council obviously trying to get the very best possible outcome for the members of township, the township of Springwater. And I personally thank those folks for holding strong and frankly, for not quitting, because we desperately, desperately need you. Thank you for not quitting. I see four members, commonly through their words, their body language and their clear disrespect for others, making this annexation process so much worse than it needs to be. You are hurting your township in a big way. And this is evident in every meeting I've seen and watched. It's not good governance. It's not good governing. It's blatant politicking. And now is the time for politicking. Wait for next fall with the voters. Hopefully, we'll look to good governors and not politicians. It makes a difference, and this is a prime example of it. So I have a lot of really positive suggestions for the future of Springwater Township, but today's conversation is about annexation. I say, let's milk this province of Ontario and the city of Berry for everything Springwater can get out of this process. Let's do it strategically. Let's do it wisely, and let's get as much as we possibly can. Because if we can't come together, if you can't come together, we will not like the results we get because they'll be forced on us. Thank you.
Our next our next speaker is Chris Ellis of 321 Miller Drive.
Thank you. I just just wanted to make a quick statement. I moved to our home in Springwater six years ago from the city of Berry. We moved to move into more of a country home. We wanted to enjoy the well-septuous country living. And, you know, we've only been there six years. I now have two boys. And this is, you know, it came as a surprise. There's maybe impacts to taxes. We have concerns as it relates to servicing. These are all things that, had we been aware that this is something that may have been taken away from us, we might have reconsidered moving to Springwater. So we just wanted to share our concerns and hope that this is this is fully considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is our next speaker is Sean Mason. Before you begin, Mr. Mason, is it possible to just do a mic check? We're still having people. We can get some hands at the back. Now we're good. Okay, thank you.
You can yell if you want.
Thank you.
My speech is exactly five minutes, so I'll I'll hit the end. I think it's amazing. So, sorry, Sean Mason, 3100 Seals Avenue East, Markham, Ontario. I think it's amazing how the emotions and the opinions here decry and demote research and science and how we are having opinions on hired experts. So my speech. My name is Sean Mason. I'm the founder of sean.ca, a builder and developer of sustainable middle, middle, missing middle housing. Just last month, we were honored to be named Canada's Federal Energy Star Builder of the Year for 2024, 2025. I've been building homes in Berry for two decades, and all of our companies and lands that we own are in Berry and in Springwater. We are committed to Simcoe Region. We hire local trades, local consultants, local people. I'm the one who does the driving. Everyone else hears from Simcoe. Our projects are over 90% Canadian-made. I'm here tonight to express my support for the provincial land facilitator's recommendation on transferring certain lands from Springwater into Berry. I also support the principle of cross-border servicing for the Bayfield Corridor, which I believe can bring meaningful benefits to both municipalities and fast. And I know there's opinions on that. We have employment and residential lands here. To get to the employment lands, we have to go across a transition from the current Berry housing, which is on the northern border. At every level of government, federal, provincial and municipal, and even in Springwater, we all agree that there is a clear and urgent call for different types of housing and lower-cost housing. Even all of Springwater Council acknowledges the non-environmental lands, obviously not the ones around Little Lake, in question should be developed. But how? To me, the answer is clear. Berry has demonstrated that it can service these lands soon. They have made firm commitments, and from what I've seen, remains the most cost-effective path forward. Berry Council has also demonstrated an ability to move projects from plan to reality. Springwater's own consultants hired by this council have confirmed these conclusions independently verified. We can question them now. You can hire more, but that's already been done. Development landowners that are going to build homes and provide space for jobs for local people have voiced their desire to move into Berry or at minimum have Berry serviced their projects. I've already mentioned why they are being questioned. One of the parcels we own in front of the Berry Golf and Country Club has been in our portfolio for 12 years, longstanding. Despite longstanding resolutions from this council and Berry passed in 2014 that would allow for cross-border servicing, we have had gone nowhere with these attempts to move forward under the current framework. Some of our properties have gas lines to the to the edge. We have sidewalks to the edge. We have roads to the edge. We have sewers to the edge. It is logical. We all recognize the serious housing and affordability challenges facing Canadians. This is a moment that calls for decisive leadership and timely action. Two years of dialogue and study is substantial. It reflects careful work, not haste. Different viewpoints are a part of the democratic process, but disagreement does not necessarily mean it's been it's been rushed. And now there is a deadline that is being put on by the province. And I think Mr. Douglas said it well. You can try to get the best deal you can, but eventually, when you push your poker chips in too far, you might just lose. While our lands are located in Springwater, they are our lands. The city is not buying them off of us to put into Springwater. They are our lands. They might be in Springwater, but they're ours. We want to be a constructive partner in developing them. Change is never easy, yet the same concerns to sometimes slow housing projects, like fears about growth, are the very factors that leave young adults living in their parents' basements. We need to bridge that gap thoughtfully and courageously. The area in question, I'll speed up just a bit. The area in question generates 150,000 bucks a year in taxes, yet an arrangement with Berry is said to be given approximately 23 million. Put it in the bank, you'll earn more in interest than you will from the taxes. It's at no cost to Springwater. What you think you are losing is an opportunity cost if it could be serviced. We don't think it can. It's not a bad deal. If the rattling of the chains and the gnashing of the teeth was to get a better deal, you've done that. You've increased the better deal. But you don't want the car buyer to walk away and take your car with you when he goes. The Innisville scenario is still there. Congress of no time. Collectively, you say you want the Saddle development, the Robinson Healthcare facility are desirable. And now we hear that a hospital project from Mayor Nuttall on Monday was maybe in the works. I'm assuming eventually there'll be schools and libraries and things like that, too. By voting this down, you're losing those opportunities. The Loopster Nixon letter says right on it, it's confidential and subject to solicitor client privilege. And it states there is merit to both the Berry proposal and Midhurst expansion servicing scenarios. Those are quotes, each with its own distinct advantages. Yet that was written before the deal was sweetened. It's been sweetened. Before we knew about the view of the developers wanting to get this done, before the facilitator put out the agreements we saw a couple of weeks ago, and before the plenary findings. I think Mayor Coughlin has a mature reading of the room. I want to thank Mayor Coughlin and Mayor Nuttall for their leadership and their willingness to work together for the benefit of both communities.
Your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will call upon Eldon Theodore on behalf of Sunnydale OP Inc. And I'm going to ask that you hold the mic as close as you can and speak into the mic for the people in the back.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eldon Theodore, 750 Weston Road, Suite 230, Whibley, Ontario. I'm here on behalf of Sunnydale OP Inc., owners of the property is 731 Sunnydale Road. As council recalls, their lands are the subject of an MZO request for affordable and attainable housing in Springwater, which receive support from this council. We also find ourselves within the proposed boundary adjustment for the city of Berry. My clients are focused on delivering housing. That's what they're good at, and affordable and attainable is what they do. The current MZO submission was made because we've done the work. We identified the need and concluded this property in Springwater is ideally located to provide this opportunity. Now, at a similar city of Berry meeting on September 29th, my client indicated their support for the adjustment. This support was given because it is recognized that whether their property continues to be in Springwater or finds itself in Berry down the road, we are still in a unique position where we know that our proposal continues to work and will still provide affordable and attainable housing to serve the region in any outcome. In particular, our submissions to the township, as well as the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, outline that development is capable of being serviced in Springwater or Berry and that we're open to whatever solution made the most sense. To conclude, and regardless of the jurisdiction that this property lands in, the proximity of this development will have residents from both communities living there and benefiting from the housing this development offers. So we are supportive of the boundary adjustment, should council endorse it. And we look forward to council's decision on the matter and happy to answer any questions should you. I assume that you do not.
Thank you for your submission. Our next speaker is Jane Voorhees. And your name and address again, please.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin, council members and staff. My name is Jane Voorhees, and I live at 7 Black Forest Lane in Oremodonte. For the past two years, I've been advocating on behalf of our residents in Oremodonte against annexation. Over that time, I've learned that sometimes the best thing you can do, especially when emotions run high, is to take a step back. When I pause and view the city of Berry's annexation push from a wider perspective, one thing becomes clear to me. The evidence does not add up. The process is rushed, and the principles of a true win-win for all parties are missing. To gain more perspective, it helps to remember how this annexation demand by the city began. In a speech to the Standing Committee on Heritage Infrastructure and Cultural Policy in November of 2023, Mayor Nuttall stated, "Our city has a problem. The problem is we don't have any industrial land supply." So this process all started with a claim needed for land for industrial development. When the Stage Two Hempson Report failed to confirm Berry's claimed need for industrial land by 2051, the city recently and simply changed the Stage Three parameters to extend the horizon to 2061, just to make their case fit for industrial supply. That is not responsible land planning. It's a spin. As residents of Oremodonte, we see the reality every day. Vast areas of unused land within Berry, empty fields, undeveloped spaces that could easily accommodate future growth. Reports show the city has earned failing grades for housing starts, failing grades for intensification. And yet, we are being asked to accept a draft annexation proposal for a vast swath of farmland, environmentally protected land, rushed forward under the banner of economic and housing opportunity for Berry's growth. This two-year annexation facilitation process has been anything but open or fair to tax-paying residents. I know that many Oremodonte and Springwater residents have signed petitions and have written numerous letters to government officials, only met to with that's it, silence. Maps and key details have been released by Berry only days before public meetings and barely a week of public engagement before our respective councils vote. That is not meaningful consultation. In my mind, that's a checkbox exercise. I strongly believe that unity among your township, Oremodonte, and the council of Simcoe is so critical right now. We must stand together and demand meaningful amendments to Berry's draft annexation proposal before it's presented to Minister Flack. This way, we can get a win-win for all those concerned. As a resident of Oremodonte, I believe that together with Springwater and the county of Simcoe, we must stand united, calling for four key actions. One, transparent timelines for consultation with indigenous and environmental partners that have been left out, as promised by the provincial land facilitator. Two, binding protections to prevent Berry from rezoning the proposed annexed community lands to industrial use without township consent, especially when Mayor Nuttall spoke in 2023, quote, "boundary adjustment and subsequent rezoning of lands abutting Berry would allow for the advancement of serviced industrial lands." Three, firm guarantees against any future annexations for decades to come. And lastly, amendments to the proposed boundary lines to ensure those lines are genuinely serving township residents, Simcoe County, and promote long-term regional balance. This draft from the city of Berry must reach the minister as a living document shaped by meaningful amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Hannah.
Good evening, council. Jack Hannah, 22 Fred Boulevard in Midhurst. And nice to see all these people here. And the majority of these people, I'd say, are here because we're all concerned about selling off Springwater land. I know it's called annexation, but I believe that's not correct. I think this is a sale, if you like, based on negotiations that have taken place, we've seen both mayors, Berry and Springwater. And I don't want to make this a night of personal attacks because that's not going to accomplish anything. The negotiations that take place basically mount down to two scenarios. Berry's offering some money. Berry's offering some money, not enough, I don't believe, for the valuable land that they want. Springwater has come up with a maiden Springwater solution. And if you look at the pros and cons between the Springwater solution, I believe that Deputy Corbell first advanced, the merits of that solution are far superior. But some of the negative comments about that solution have been that it would take a decade for Springwater to be able to provide services to Bayfield Street. And obviously, if you look at other reports that we've seen from consultants, that it's suggested that the infrastructure on Bayfield Street could be done within two to three years for a cost somewhere around 12 to 15 million dollars. There's been other statements, maybe by some members of this council, that would be up to 150 million dollars. The point is, it doesn't matter what that costs. Taxpayers don't pay for it. So when you look at the both mayors of the maiden Springwater versus the Berry deal, Springwater, the merits are far superior. And I know that some of you have made rigid decisions. I don't think I'm going to be able to change them, but I think it's really important that the province understands this. And when it's suggested that if we don't make a deal, the province is going to make the deal for us. I believe that would happen if you didn't have a maiden Springwater solution. But this alternative that's come forward by the Midhurst Landowners Group, offering to pay for the infrastructure, build a bigger waste plan, if you like, for water and wastewater. The benefits to Springwater are lifelong, but if you sell off this land, you're really taking away the future of Springwater. Some of the best commercial development land will be gone. And if you don't keep this, Springwater doesn't keep Saddle and Remington in Springwater, you won't be able to run those pipes down Bayfield Street. If you don't run the pipes from Snow Valley Road to Berry city limits, you won't be able to develop Bayfield Street commercially. That's another major loss to the taxpayers of Springwater. Couple of other things that have come up recently is that, well, we know that the township lawyer said this is a bad deal for Springwater not to take it. I hope you're paying attention to that. The other thing that just came out recently as well from lawyers is that Mayor Powers doesn't provide the authority for council to sell off Springwater land. If that's correct, and that's not legal, and that takes place, could be a major litigation against this township. And if the township's litigated against and they lose, the Springwater taxpayers pay that loss. The lawsuits get paid by the taxpayers. Now, if you're sued individually as a member of council, you're not entitled to legal representation if you do something that's not legal. And if there's a judgment against you, taxpayers aren't going to pay that either. And if this council would let that happen, I think you're putting taxpayers of Springwater in more jeopardy. So I'm suggesting council, you don't have to be rigid. If you made a decision based on information you had some time ago, and now you have different information, you can consider change in your mind, and it's not going to make you look like you did something wrong. And one last person I'd like to ask is Counselor Garwood. You haven't expressed your position on this at all during any council meeting. You're one of the three people that is supporting this annex. It's not annexation, it's a sellout. You're one of the three people supporting that. And I know you're not going to answer tonight, but I'd like to hear from you in the future council meetings. What's your position on selling off Springwater land to Berry? Thank you, council. Have a good night.
Our next, our next speaker is Christine Nugent of 2687 County Road 92.
My name is Christine Nugent of 2687 County Road 92, Lot 19, North Park, Concession 8. Fifty years of Nugent Farm, previously the Beller Farm. Previously, the Kid Farm always will be the Kid Farm. Well, that's a farm joke. Once the kid farm, always the kid farm. So thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My last intervention at a previous council meeting, we discussed the issue of power and decision-making. With the conditions of our present provincial and municipal elected officials, what was raised was a decline of democracy by the powers that be, who are undermining safeguards and consolidating power in the hands of the few. At that time, references made to strong mayor powers as outlined in the provincial legislation and the role given to provincial government through facilitation, through providing facilitators. The existing electoral system represents a few, not the many. An example of this provincially, where all the pressure is coming from, is the enacting of strong mayor legislation, which does away with majority rule on city councils and makes it easier for mayors to decide. It also, in Ontario, the reforming of the electoral system to ensure that no party can attain the power with 41% of the vote again, would be a good start. In June of 2022, the ruling party in the provincial government won 67% of the seats with just 41% of the popular vote. They received the support of less than 18% of eligible voters. They are given 100% of power to decide. So here we are in these chambers discussing decision-making and consultation. Does this have meaning? Consultation only has meaning if there's consent. In discussions with fellow citizens and neighbors and through communication with our representative, Counselor Matt Garwood, it has been raised the need for democratic reform and to stop annexation. It must be stopped until we, the people, have meaningful consultation and consent. Today, all throughout the development of legislated economic zones in our municipalities, in our province, and nationally now, meaningful consultation, which includes taking action on people's views, is not taking place. As a proposal to resolve this trend toward a few dictating to the many and the need for we, the people, to have a meaningful say in these important matters, we are recommending that a referendum be established to decide the annexation issue, and if not possible, due to the dictatorial provincial deadlines, that one take place at next year's municipal election through opposed question of support or not be added as a question at the ballot box. That is all Springwater citizens, eligible voters, to decide yes or no to the proposed annexation plan. Note, the municipal referendum can be held under the Municipal Election Act of 1996. Town council must pass a bylaw to put the question on the ballot, submit it to the municipal clerk and Ministry of Municipal Affairs for review. Hold it during a municipal election or as a special vote. If more than 50% of eligible voters participate and majority support the measure, the result becomes binding on the municipality. So in this situation, you have to have 50%. In the provincial government, 18% of eligible voters, 100% of the power to dictate to us how we're going to run Springwater. We have to have a new direction to the economy that serves the rights of all. We and you elected officials here join in this proposal of establishing a referendum on the issue at hand. This meeting is stated as an opportunity toward consultation. This meeting must, we are suggesting, to go forward, look towards meaningful change in the democratic process. What say all of you?
Our next speaker is Greg Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin and council for offering this opportunity to address you in the public this evening. It is important to review how this divided council has mishandled many issues facing the corporation of the township of Springwater. Further, the misguided approach and poor judgment of four members of council has created an unworkable governance structure, leading to costly outcomes for the taxpayer. It is important for this pattern continues. At first, this decisions had small but not insignificant taxpayer impacts. However, the symbolic nature of the decisions taken in a four to three split were red flags of the costly dysfunction to come, which has been created by the poor decisions taken by Deputy Mayor Cabral, Counselor Fisher, Counselor Alexander, and Counselor Moore. For those here in the audience and watching from home, here are items that were passed on a four to three split, in which all or almost all were recorded votes. One, the decision to cut financial sport to the Enville Farmers Market in a post-COVID environment, when Springwater should have been fostering the return of tourist initiatives. Two, the withdrawal of township notices in the Springwater News after nearly 30 years in favor of a more expensive mailer. Since there were no clear media penetration benefits identified and increased costs were incurred, many believe the action was taken using taxpayer dollars to apply punitive action against this independent publication and its owner. Three, our public library. Seven words: library, independence, a tax, unionization, increased taxes. Four, for over a decade, Springwater CAOs have been asking for, that an economic development officer be added. Three times, this council denied this budgetary request in a four to three vote. Counselor Thompson has been particularly persistent in this addition. Why? Because he knows the best way to provide relief for the taxpayer is to encourage this type of development. Five, in the fall of 2023, in a vote split four to three, council passed a motion that Mayor Coughlin not negotiate with the city of Berry on anything but cross-border servicing agreements. The red line barred our mayor from being able to begin negotiations and involve the public, while giving Mayor Nuttall lots of ammunition with the province as to why Berry should have those lands and more. Six, Cabral, Fisher, Alexander, and Moore hired former Mayor Tony Jurgis to advise council on the topic at hand tonight, despite the fact that Springwater constituents have twice and by significant margins rejected Mr. Jurgis in the 2014 and the 2018 elections. No Formula One race car driver there. Again, taxpayers' dollars wasted. Seven, on July 2 of this year, consultants, a consultant's report by Ainsley Group, who advised the township since its inception, and in particular in the Midhurst Secondary Plan, dissected and discarded, discredited the feasibility of the Midhurst Landowners Group ability to develop servicing in the Bayfield Street corridor and the Forbes Road residential and industrial lands to meet provincial priorities in a timely fashion. You will not hear four members of council highlight this report, nor the negative tax implications identified in the Watson Report. Eight, Cabral, Fisher, Alexander, and Moore, despite the Ainsley Report, flip-flopped on their previous support of the Remington and Saddle MZOs. Their approval of the MZO now requires servicing to come from Springwater, put another way, from the Midhurst Landowners Group, the only other identifiable supplier. In summary, to Minister Flack and to Premier Ford, the flip-flop must have been laughable. The restrictions originally placed on Mayor Coughlin, regretful. They would also know about Cabral, Fisher, Alexander, and Moore's allegiance floating, consistent, misguided, and poor judgment, Springwater's unworkable governance structure, leading to costly outcomes for the taxpayer, disarray in addressing provincial priorities, leading to Ford's justification for strong mayor powers here. Is there anyone in this room or at home who truly believes that this conservative government, which has overwhelming control of the legislatures, whose priorities are economic development and housing, especially seniors' housing, will heed the nonsensical political posturing of a former police officer, an RV salesman, and an acclaimed counselor? Are there any members of the public who believe the province was not deadly serious when they requested a local solution? Meaning the mayor negotiates. To you, I say this, the Canadian Constitution, Constitution municipalities exist at the whim of a province. I grew up in North York. You ever heard of it? Now Toronto. How about the 16 townships of Victoria County, now the city of Coretta Lakes? Vespa and North of Kundles? To Mayor Coughlin. With a now overwhelming majority of votes in the last election, just 258 votes short of Cabral, Fisher, Alexander, and Moore combined, 1,072 more when you include Counselor Thompson and Counselor Garwood's support. Thank you for being our designated negotiator, for enduring and persisting. You represented Springwater at the table. Thank you.
Our next speaker this our next speaker. Our next speaker is Francis Mullin. Do we have Francis Mullin with us this evening? We will now move on to Jason Sheldon on behalf of Remington Group.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Coughlin, members of council, members of the community. My name is Jason Sheldon. I'm here on behalf of Lonnie Bra Development Inc., care of the Remington Group. We are the owners of 727 Bayfield Street North in Springwater. Although our lands are not within the proposed boundary adjustment area and are currently shown as remaining within the township of Springwater, we understand that the discussions around cross-border servicing with the city of Berry are intricately linked to the item before council this evening. As background, in August of 2023, we submitted a MZO application to the township of Springwater to construct a seniors' continuum of care, including long-term care facilities, retirement residents, a palliative and hospice care center, life lease buildings, medical offices, resulting in a full range of housing choice and approximately 300 permanent jobs. The development provides an opportunity to meet a number of community-building priorities. As part of our MZO application review, it was determined the biggest box we needed to check was how to service the lands, with two options being available, through the township of Springwater or through the city of Berry. Through exhaustive analysis, peer reviews, and professional opinions of four prominent engineering firms working directly in the community, similar conclusions were reached. To quote one of the firms, "The proposed development can be immediately serviced with respect to water, storm, sanitary, and is anticipated to have immediate access to hydro, gas, and telecom." Through an assessment of the existing servicing opportunities in both the township of Springwater and the city of Berry, it has been shown that the preferred solution is for the city of Berry to provide both water and sanitary services." End quote. Servicing through Berry is simpler, more cost-effective, and quicker. It only requires extensions to linear infrastructure as opposed to water and wastewater treatment plan upgrades if servicing were to go through Midhurst. At the July 2, 2025 Springwater council meeting, council voted to revoke support of our MZO application unless we serviced through the Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities. Although we were and continue to be extremely disappointed in that decision, we still believe there remains a path forward through continued discussion and collaboration between the township of Springwater, city of Berry, county of Simcoe, the province, and the community to deliver our seniors' continuum of care campus in the most cost-effective and timely manner possible. Our interests and goals have remained consistent since our 2023 MZO submission to seek the best method of achieving local and provincial priorities by delivering our continuum of care project in the most timely and cost-effective manner possible for the broader region. Finding this path forward delivers much-needed variety of living options, including long-term care, community services, and permanent jobs. But given the information cost analysis provided to date through the work of four prominent and respected engineering firms, servicing through the Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities is neither a financially viable nor time-certain option, both of which are crucial to advance the project in this economy. The most timely and cost-effective path forward is to continue the Folsom discussion to support servicing through the city of Berry. We have the collective opportunity to advance essential community-building goals for the region in the near term by making efficient use of existing servicing infrastructure, absent of political boundaries. To conclude, thank you to all parties involved in the proposed boundary adjustment and cross-border servicing discussions. Thank you to Mayor Coughlin, members of council, for your time and consideration of our remarks this evening. We remain incredibly optimistic that a path forward can be achieved, and we look forward to and we look forward to working collaboratively with the province, the county, town, city and the community to move our continuum of care campus through to construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Sheardown.
Mayor Coghlan, members of council, I'm Ron Sheardown. Uh, I was, I'm one of the owners of Berry Welding Machine. I was born and raised in Springwater and currently live in Springwater. Berry Weldings been in Barry for over eighty years. Our group of companies own approximately a million square feet of industrial properties in the city of Barry. In winter months, we employ over thirteen hundred people in Barry and Springwater. In two thousand and twenty, T N R Doors, a multinational corporation operating in over thirty countries, wanted to purchase property in the city of Barry. After an exhaustive search, they couldn't find a suitable industrial site in Barry. In two thousand and twenty-one, T N R Doors contacted us to find a viable home. Snow Valley Yorkwood owns approximately a hundred and eighty acres at the corner of Sunnydale and Wilson Drive on the outskirts of Barry in the township of Springwater. T N R Doors was very interested in locating to this property, along with a number of other companies looking to relocate. We presented a concept for serviced industrial business park to the Township and Springwater Council in September of two thousand and twenty-one for just seventy-one of the hundred and eighty acres. At the request of Springwater Council, we held a public information session to inform surrounding neighbors of the plan. We received letters of support for the concept. An economic analysis was completed by Urban Metrics in February of two thousand and twenty-two, indicating that financial benefit to the community would be three hundred and fifty-four million dollars in one-time spending, four point six million dollars in development charges, three thousand eighty-five jobs and three hundred and seventy million dollars added to the economy, nine hundred and fifteen permanent onsite jobs upon completion, half a million dollars in annual property tax revenue. This information was provided to Springwater Council and township staff. We intended to go before Springwater Council to proceed with an MZO to help fast-track the development and help meet T N R Doors timeframe that they required to be operational. We tried to meet individually with members of Springwater Council at the time. Two of the members of councillor, council refused to meet with us. On two different occasions, we were on Springwater Council's agenda proceed, to proceed with a motion for an MZO to fast-track the designation and zoning of the lands for industrial purposes. As it became apparent that Springwater Council was going to turn us down in a four-three vote, we withdrew from the deputation, believing that no decision was better than a negative decision. At the same time as this was happening, the city of Barry had recognized the dire need for more employment lands. Over the past thirty years, the Berry Welding Group has been approached by individual users looking for facilities on an ongoing basis, and there just simply isn't a supply of serviced industrial land in the city of Barry. In January of two thousand and twenty-two, we sent a letter to the Honorable Steve Clark requesting that Snow Valley Yorkwood lands be included in the lands earmarked for Barry's boundary expansion for employment uses. Several conversations occurred between Snow Valley Yorkwood and Barry's Mayor Nuttall about including our lands in the Barry expansion and the desperate need for employment lands. Snow Valley Yorkwood proceeded to complete a long list of technical studies and various disciplines to be shovel-ready. In June of two thousand and twenty-three, we wrote to Mayor Nuttall requesting a restructuring of Barry's municipal boundaries to incorporate the Snow Valley Yorkwood lands to be used for employment purposes and advised Mayor Nuttall that Snow Valley Yorkwood supports the incorporation of their property into the city of Barry municipal boundary. On October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, a news release came out by the Ontario Government about T N R Doors with the headline, "Ontario welcomes forty-million-dollar manufacturing investment as T N R Doors expansion will create good-paying jobs in Oral Madanti." What a loss for Springwater. It's now been six years since we expressed an interest in providing industrial employment lands for the benefit of Springwater Township. It's become abundantly clear that the majority of Springwater Council did not want this to happen. Springwater seems to have spent considerable time and money determining how Barry expansion boundaries were decided. This seems to be a waste of taxpayers' money when all we have seen, when we have all seen the maps produced by the city of Barry. I would suggest to the people of the township of Springwater that a portion of Barry's expansion happened because of what didn't happen in these council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheardown. Our next speaker is Mike Campbell of Three Anthony Court.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. Uh, a terrible deal regarding the Barry boundary adjustment. Counselor Fisher was quoted in the Barry Today article dated July third, two thousand and twenty-five as saying, "I think it's obviously a terrible deal. Anyone actually goes along with it as a terrible dealmaker." There are numerous terms in the final version of the proposed agreement with Barry. Some of the main points include twenty-two-point-nine million for Springwater plus some economic development initiatives and protection for eighty-one affected landlords regarding future property tax increases, including extended protection for active farming operations for a twenty-year period. Aside from saying it's a terrible deal, I've never heard any of the councillors who oppose the annexation offer a solution as to what would constitute a good deal, with the exception of saying no. The precedent has been set. The province has imposed solutions on municipalities who have opposed past the annexations. If your answer is to shut the door, we will no doubt be stuck with a terrible deal. Thank you, Mayor Coghlan, for hitting this on the head and for not burying your head in the sand. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Lynn Atkinson of Forty-nine Willow Landing.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan and council for the opportunity. Uh, from, uh, my name's Mary Lynn Atkinson. I live at Forty-nine Willow Landing and have done so for many years. Uh, and remember what the gentleman from, uh, Elville referred to when Barry took the income-rich land. Uh, but, uh, what I don't understand and seeking clarification about is who's paying the tab on this? Like, sometimes it sounds like the developers paying, uh, for the, um, installation of the services, um, for the Sadlin and Remington lands. Sometimes it sounds like Springwater is, that means I am the taxpayer is on the hook. So I'm seeking clarification on who's paying the tab? I thought developers did, but you know, I'm not a developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janine Peck of Fifty-two Idlewood Drive.
Good evening. I'm Janine Peck. I live at Fifty-two Idlewood Drive in Midhurst. It often seems that residents don't pay much attention to township matters until something directly affects them, such as a bylaw concern or a desire to do something outside of the municipal rules. Only then will residents turn their attention to local governance. Over the past few months, I've asked my neighbors in Midhurst what they think about the proposed boundary adjustment. The typical responses I've heard are, "I'm not really sure about it." "I don't follow township news," or "I'm too busy with work." And you know what? These are honest and entirely understandable answers. But this is exactly why you are elected to council, to stay informed, explore the facts, consider the options and make decisions that truly represent the residents of Springwater. Our council plays a critical role in guiding this community's future and that responsibility demands thoughtful leadership, not immediate rejection. Some members of council have responded to the boundary adjustment process with a simple no. That isn't leadership, it's avoidance. A flat refusal to even examine the possibilities does not reflect the diligence or open-mindedness that the residents of Springwater deserve. This issue is complex with lasting implications for our township's growth, finances and quality of life. Saying no is not an answer. It's giving up before the conversation begins. I urge some members of council to stop using delay tactics and approach the boundary adjustment with the seriousness it warrants. As Mayor Coghlan wisely said in her June sixteenth interview with the CBC, "I'd rather be at the table than on the menu." Opting out of negotiations does not protect the township. It simply removes our voice from decisions that will shape our future. The residents of Springwater deserve leaders who are willing to do the hard work of engagement and negotiation, not those who retreat behind the word "no." I strongly support Mayor Coghlan's leadership and her commitment to continuing negotiating a fair, forward-looking agreement with the city of Barry. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Lingerfeller of Fourteen Stokes Drive.
All right. I'm gonna read it. So I understand why this agreement is controversial. I don't think any Springwater resident wakes up in the morning thinking that they wish the city of Barry would annex some of our lands. However, one of the greatest teachers we have is history. I read Ken O'Brien's piece in the Springwater News on May twentieth with interest as he had a seat at the table during the annex discussions between Barry and the township Vespa in nineteen eighty-four. There were several good points about the benefits of this agreement, but the one that stuck with me is this. To quote Mr. O'Brien, what makes the Barry-Springwater shared principles stand out is the spirit of mutual negotiation and shared benefit, a true win-win. This is in stark contrast to recent boundary changes in places like Elgin and Innisville, where the province imposed one-sided divisions, sorry, decisions with the municipalities. End quote. I'm concerned if we didn't have our two mayors together at the table, this deal will be made for them. I just want to acknowledge your efforts and say thank you for the leadership shown here by keeping Springwater at the table to negotiate the best possible outcome.
Our next speaker is Cameron Sellers of Ten Heatherwood Drive.
Good evening, council. Cameron Sellers, Innovative Planning Solutions. Um, here tonight on behalf of the owners of five-sixty Anne Street North to voice support for the proposed boundary adjustment. We believe that the proposal aligns with provincial goals for coordinated housing and employment growth. The five-sixty Anne Street, uh, property sits on Barry's urban edge. It's ideal for efficient servicing and integration into Barry's infrastructure network. The inclusion of these lands within Barry allows the lands to be planned and serviced comprehensively rather than isolated at the township boundary. We believe that the proposed boundary adjustment supports managed growth to both Springwater and to Barry. We believe that it offers significant financial, servicing and development opportunities to the township along the Bayfield Corridor. And we also recognize that it maintains environmental buffers for a smooth municipal transition. Specific to the five-sixty Anne Street site, we believe that this boundary adjustment enables timely servicing, design integration with the adjacent built city and contributes to housing and employment for the region. We believe this boundary adjustment is forward-looking and beneficial for both Springwater and for Barry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darren Bella of six-four-seven Wellam Road.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name is Darren Bella. I am the President Director of Planning for Innovative Planning Solutions. Being in the planning business for the last twenty-five years, I've had the ability to recollect many experiences that shape where we are today. Some of you may not be aware, but prior to me starting IPS Consulting, I was the manager of planning for the township of Springwater from two thousand and two to two thousand and four. This was around the time that the township of Springwater began to commence work on the much-anticipated Midhurst Secondary Plan. At the time the work commenced, there was actually significant debate, not only at the township level, but also at the county regarding the size of the Midhurst Settlement Boundary. Many thought the Midhurst Boundary was too large and that the boundary should be refined and reduced. Eventually, after much debate, the boundary remained as is and work commenced. When I started IPS in two thousand and four, some of my first clients were developers in Springwater, including lands in Midhurst. The secondary plan was a long contentious battle, but ultimately, the secondary plan was approved by the then Ontario Municipal Board. There was never any discussion surrounding an expansion or Phase Two to the Midhurst Secondary Plan. I understand that this was said during these deliberations, uh, over the last eighteen months, but this is simply not true. The current secondary plan is approved to permit approximately ten thousand units. This equates to the size of the city of Aurelia. Let me repeat that again, ten thousand units, the size of the city of Aurelia. This secondary plan is approaching its twenty-year anniversary. So let's think about what's been accomplished in the last twenty years, where we've seen consistent and some of the strongest housing starts and development trends in our province. Midhurst has seen the construction of approximately five hundred homes out of the ten thousand homes that have been approved in twenty years. The water and sewage needed to support the ten thousand units is nowhere close to being constructed. You drive down the hill coming out of Barry along Bayfield Street, where things look exactly the same and the infrastructure needed to allow development along the Bayfield Corridor doesn't even exist. The pipes currently being built along Finley Mill Road and Snow Valley Road, you can't even connect to along Bayfield Street because they are high-pressure pipes that does not allow for any connections unless you are up on Gill Road. So let's think about what's happened in the city of Barry in the last twenty years. They've invested hundreds of millions of dollars on infrastructure to support growth, expanded water wastewater systems, created new commercial employment opportunities for the entire county, and they build more than five hundred homes every single year. Between January of two thousand and twenty-three to August of two thousand and twenty-five alone, Barry started four thousand and thirty-six dwelling units. Barry has created the level of sophistication and horsepower needed to run a city of this size. If we want to help the province reach their potential, if we care about solving the housing, housing crisis, if we care about having land shovel-ready, this is the only option. Mayor Coghlan and Springwater Council, you have the ability to walk away with an exceptional scenario where you're trading one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of tax assessment for a check for twenty-three million dollars. You have the potential to generate millions of dollars through future taxation through cross-border servicing with Barry and guaranteed infrastructure at no risk to any of your taxpayers. This is a great deal for Springwater and will unlock great potential that does not need, need to wait for a landowners group to continue building or expanding a sewage treatment plant. My office is representing a number of landowners in this affected area. In total, out of the two hundred and eighty-three hectares of land proposed to be placed into the city of Barry for community area purposes, I am representing or have had discussions with eighty percent of those landowners. All of them believe this current proposal is the best viable option. I would also add that the majority of these landowners are local businesses, not developers from the GTA. If these landowners believed the Midhurst Landowners Group option was the better option, that would clearly be articulated to this council as that we are in the business of developing land. It's time for the next phase of this work to begin, and that starts with the boundary adjustment moving forward to the province for approval. We need to ensure that these lands are ready for development with economic times improve. We need to ensure that these lands are ready for development when economic times improve. We certainly need to attract investment and opportunities for all citizens to benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Randall Matthew of 25 Holloway Lane. I'm not seeing Randall Matthew. I hope I'm saying that right. At this time, that ends our registered participants. At this time, we'll move on to members from the gallery here this evening. Our first section tonight will be the affected property owners. The second section will be the Springwater residents and businesses, followed by any additional speakers. At this time, are there any residents whose properties are directly affected by the annexation present here tonight that would like to make an oral submission regarding this public meeting? Please come forward to the podium, and if there are additional, please line up behind.
Good evening, Mayor Coglan, members of council, and residents of Springwater. My name is Paul Sadlin. I live at 866 St. Vincent Street. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to show my support for bringing sewer and water services to our property at 742 Bayfield Street under the current annexation framework. I've lived in Springwater almost my entire life, and our family has been a part of this area since 1971. We've grown here, raised families here, built relationships here. This community isn't just where we work, it's home. That's why this project means so much to us. We've been patiently waiting to develop these lands. For the past few years, we've been working to move an MZO forward so we can finally bring some meaningful, something meaningful to this location. To do that, we need a reliable servicing partner, and Barry is really the only option. Cross-border servicing just makes sense. It benefits both Springwater and Barry by allowing this land to contribute housing and the local community instead of sitting idle. Over the past two years, we've hired consultants and engineers to study every servicing option, and every one of them came to the same conclusion. The most efficient, timely, and cost-effective way to service this land is through Barry. It's a practical solution, and it works for both municipalities. But this project isn't just about building houses. Our vision is to create a neighborhood of attainable homes, places where local families, first-time buyers, and young professionals can actually afford to buy, live, and still afford to eat. We're not talking about rows of McMansions that drive profits and push people out of reach. We want to build a community, real homes for real families, something that fits with the character of Springwater. We're also proud that our property sits right at the gateway to Springwater. This is the first impression people see when they enter the township, and we want to make it something we can all be proud of, a welcome, vibrant entrance that reflects the values of this community. Beyond housing, we plan to include professional services and amenities that make this area better for everyone, including community gardens, trails, a park, and spaces for recreation. We see this as an opportunity to create local jobs and support the residents who already live and work here. And most importantly, this project also provides the opportunity for Springwater's first southern high school. The school board has made it clear that their needs are immediate, and the only way we can make this happen is with servicing from Barry. Without it, the school can't move forward. This is an investment in our youth and our future, and it starts with reliable infrastructure. We believe this site can become a special project, a place that adds value to the community and reflects local pride. And I want to be clear, we're not outside developers here to build and disappear. We've been part of this community for more than 50 years, and we'll be here the next 150. We care deeply about what gets built, how it fits, and who it serves. This is a chance to do something truly special, and we're ready to get started. With your support, we can move forward, create a neighborhood that people are proud to call home, one that strengthens the gateway to Springwater, increases attainable housing, brings a new high school, creates local jobs, and benefits both the municipality and the people who live here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other property owners within the affected area?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rick Crook. I'm, you've seen me here probably too many times. I'm a strong supporter, I'm a strong supporter of the Sadlin family. I think what they're doing is tremendous, and I think they're, wear their heart on the sleeve. And I'm supportive of Remington Group. So the Sadlins are next door to me, and the Remington Group is behind me. And I'm supportive of them. We need more nursing homes, more homeless, more choice of residences for people. Where I am, I have a vested interest in seeing services come. I've owned the property for 25 years there. There's an easement going on to my property. I have 60 houses in the city of Barry who are fence-lined. I have a golf course across the street, and I have developers all around me. From the corner of my property, it's 100 feet to services, water mains, sewer mains, gas, electricity. My granddaughter walks another 150 feet. She's at Sister Catherine Donnelly Public School, the Barry Sports Dome. Another 400 feet, you're at the East Bayfields Center, Big Community Center. We've talked about community centers in Springwater. Another couple hundred feet, you're at the Georgia Mall for shopping, whatever. I support the mayor. I support any of the councillors that have any common sense, that are looking at this, and they're looking at the numbers. I'm not here to fear monger. I hear development doesn't pay for itself. Development doesn't pay for itself. And so if development doesn't pay for itself, like why are the Midhurst Landowners Group fighting over themselves to develop this land? I, I really don't know. Anyway, I support the annexation, and I really support my property staying in Springwater and getting services so we can develop it and put some houses there so people go live there. There you go.
Thank you. Are there any other? Any anyone else wishing to speak who has property in the affected property area? Not seeing any. Before we move on to Springwater residents and businesses, members of council have requested
Council, staff, and members of the public, we are about to begin. Council, staff, and members of the public, we are about to begin. And for those that are curious, it is 1-1 at the top of the fourth. At this time, we will now be moving on to the section where Springwater residents and businesses have an opportunity. If there's anyone, Springwater resident or business, please approach the mic. And your name and address, please. One second, we'll stop the timer too. Okay, can we do a mic check?
Check, check one, two.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Hale Mahan, and I'm at 33 Hillview Crescent, just up the way from Midhurst. Just under six months ago, I sat here at this table, and I asked a question about the boundary adjustment, obviously, and asked a question about whether Springwater Township could give consideration to what I called rural determinism, which is the increasingly popular and well-supported idea that rural municipalities should and can develop their own land with their own planning processes and benefit from the economic drivers, both taxation and economic development. Within the past six months, I've attended council meetings and watched council meetings, and I've seen a lot of significant work be done to determine if that's a possibility. That was whether it was discussion that happened at your table, whether it was questions or concerns that came from this table, or whether it was reports by experts and studies that came forward. And it seems to me that that it is a possibility, and I'm quite, quite pleased to see that it's a possibility, that Springwater could develop within its own borders. There's a lot of different terms for that. I've heard the term a made-in-Springwater solution. I've heard Springwater-led approach. I've heard Midhurst expansion. Whatever the phrasing of it, I think that this is a possibility, and I think that it is the right possibility for Springwater. I've heard a lot of arguments in favor of Barry's approach, and I've heard about efficiency and timeliness and cost effectiveness. But I haven't heard as much about public will and political legitimacy and fairness. And I think that this is a very long-term decision. It affects the character and the structure of our township. And so I don't think that we can limit it to considerations of efficiency and cost effectiveness. Those are important, yes, but I also think that all things being equal, if we can keep the solution in Springwater, that in itself is a worthy goal. And so I would encourage everyone to support that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other residents, come on forward.
Sandy McConkey, 2866 Old Orchard Road. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A comment was made this evening that council is selling the land. My understanding that it is a boundary adjustment, and Springwater is getting compensation for the land. This is not a sale. It is a provincial mandate that Barry, Springwater, and Oro have been asked to work together on, and thus the proposal tonight. I do not understand the risk of working with a provincial facilitator. And so if there is a risk, please let me know or inform me, but this is not a sale. And I just, if I, you know, misunderstood that, I'd like to know, but.
Thank you. Come on forward.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you tonight. Appreciate it. And this, what I'm going to say here is not pointing fingers at anybody. It's I appreciate everybody's point of view tonight. I think everybody said some good things. And this is slightly different, what I'm trying to say here. I have looked at that presentation from Hemson to Barry in detail. I've also looked at the stage three thing as well. And I think that there is, there were two options, as you may remember, or two scenarios, I think Hemson called it. One was to try to satisfy the 298,000 people that are proposed for Barry through to 2051. By the way, it's a long time to 2051, so I don't appreciate the urgency for rushing everybody through this thing because people here haven't had a chance to say what they think. I think they should have a lot longer to consider what's going on. But anyway, the 298,000 are supposed to be mandated to be in Barry by 2051. And the Hemson people made it absolutely clear it's not possible in the land space they've got. They even had two scenarios where they overflowed into Springwater Township slightly and had built, continued to have the target of 298,000 in a small part of Springwater, the whole thing was small. And under those conditions, they would be building at a rate of 100 people per hectare, which is significantly more than anywhere in the GTA. Now, imagine you've got Vaughan's, Richmond Hill, and all these places with pretty high buildings. Barry would have to build more dense than the whole of the GTA in order to achieve that objective. So if they go a bit further into Springwater, they're still going to be very challenged to achieve that kind of rate. I think they wanted 930 hectares or something like that in order to achieve the goal of 298,000. So I would say that there's, out of those two scenarios, there's an obvious third one, which hasn't been considered at all. I haven't seen it anywhere. And that is for Barry to go back to the province and say, I'm sorry, it's not possible. Even taking some land from Springwater, it's not an achievable objective, particularly if you consider the rate that they've been developing in the last 20 years. And we've seen what's happened in Springwater. People just don't develop at the rate that they say they're going to develop. So then the question is, if the country is taking in at a peak in 2024, it was 438,000 people for the whole of Canada. It's now been reduced by Trudeau and subsequently endorsed by Carney to gradually wind it down to 250,000 people for the whole of Canada per year, right? We're still going to put those people somewhere. So look at Barry. Also included in the Hemson report was the fact that Barry isn't a target of a lot of immigration. Most of the growth in Barry is a migration from the overcrowded Toronto up to Barry. So where are they going to go when Barry is full of people, right? Running out of space there. So I would suggest that the number one thing that should happen is that Springwater, because you don't have much control over Barry, Springwater gets with Barry, goes back to the provincial land administrator, whatever she's called, and say, what you're asking can't be achieved. So then they're going to turn around to you and say, well, okay, well, where do we put the people, right? Well, it's a very big country, you know, it's a huge country, so we can accommodate 250,000 people per year in this country quite easily. And I would suggest that the province is going to say, well, we can't deal with the whole country. We've got to look at what's happening in Ontario. So then I would suggest, okay, well, in Ontario, you have five large cities, particularly, there's more cities around the place, obviously, but five cities which already have hospitals, already have transit, have a direct flight to Toronto every day, and have unlimited supply of water, and those cities are Sudbury, Timmins, North Bay, Sault Ste. Marie, and Thunder Bay. Now, if you take the most obvious one, it's North Bay. It's the same length of time to drive from North Bay to Toronto as it's from North Bay to Ottawa, and it's half that time to drive to Sudbury. And it's a one-hour flight to get to Toronto. It's got everything you could possibly have, including a first-class transit system. The airport is the second-largest airport north of Toronto. Everything is there to support the development, and you've got five of them. Then people are going to say, well, yeah, but it's a long way north, and that people don't want to go that far north. Just consider the fact that all five of those cities are further south than any city west of there. It's the 49th parallel. They're all less than the 49th parallel. Winnipeg, Edmonton, Edmonton's got quite a bit of growth, as you probably realize.
And that's the end of the five minutes. If I can just ask for your name and address, please.
To the province and say.
Your name and address, please. Your name and address, please.
David Strong, 49, 47 Finlay Mill Road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
And at this time, we can turn to our next resident of Springwater. Comments or questions?
Good evening, council. Mayor, my name is Brian Thorne. I live at 1146 St. Vincent Street. I've lived here since 1989. My kids grew up here. Actually, most, all, two of my boys work in this area, and one works in Chad. What kind of gets me confused is, I understand Barry doesn't have what they say community land. What do they need the land around the north end of Barry for? What are they going to do? Where are they going to put the parking lots? They're going to fill in more swamp? If it becomes Barryland, that is Simcoe County that we've used for years for hiking, going with their families. Once it becomes Barry, we'll have to pay. We'll have to pay for parking. That's why I don't go down to the city of Barry to ice fish anymore. I'm not paying $50 a day for parking. That's what'll happen over here. It'll turn into a money grab. Last Tuesday, October 2nd, in the Barry meeting, Alex Nell said, if we don't sign this agreement going forward to the next agreement, any kids in Springwater that want to join sports in Barry will have to wait seven days after registration and pay an extra 25% to play hockey. He's, he's just manipulating you. He's going to take everything from us. He's doing, he's telling the city of Barry, we're going to charge Springwater residents 25% more per child to play hockey. Turn around. You want this deal? You build us hockey in your, in your Springwater to support the extra 25,000 people that are coming over here by 2050. Have them build a rink, a gym. So young people here have a job. Other people have a job. This goes through? Just like before the Vesper deal. We got nothing. We have nothing to show. Barry's laughing. They're laughing at us. We need backbone. Make a sensible deal. Other than that, what can we do? We have to look out for us. The people that are coming to live here. Making the Springwater future better. But with this deal right now, it's not for the better. When those 25,000 people live there on Pools Road, they won't have the north side of Little Lake to enjoy. It's not ours anymore. Where's the community land for them? Simcoe County forests are inundated with people from Barry walking their dogs. My physiotherapist takes her dog up to Gill Road, and she lives in Barry. Just to walk her dog. But do they get charged? No, if I want to go shopping for an hour in Barry, I have to pay 10 bucks. I'm just saying. Look at both sides. They want something from us, okay? You want it? This is what we want. That's the way it has to be. It's always been in Springwater, give, give, give. And what have we got? There's nothing in Springwater for our kids, for families coming. And what is affordable housing? Explain to me a price of affordable housing. Anybody that buys here does not work here. They work in Toronto. These are satellite areas. Once they lose a job in Toronto, they're moving to where another job is. We do not have any industry in Simcoe County with the wages to support these million or $1.2 million new homes going in. Who can buy them? Not people on part-time jobs or minimum-wage jobs. Those families of parents are working two jobs. What length is that for their children?
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Our next session, our next section will be for any and all members that are here, but if there's any remaining Springwater residents that would like to speak. Not seeing any. At this time, we will move on to any other members here this evening. Your name and address, please.
Yes, Donald R. McDonald, professional farmer, reside near Udonie. Involved in approximately 2,600 acres of farming. And lifetime. I have a history. Jim Dury and I, we took on Oro Township and won there back in the 90s at the OMB. I took on the city of Arria in 1988 for their annexation. Why do you have to take the good land, farmland first? So anyways, here we go again. It's called vested interest. I don't think it's land use planning. So I talked to the fellow from the Ministry of Ag and Food about land use planning. Well, what about watershed planning? He didn't know anything about watershed planning. What about the Lake Simcoe watershed? What are we doing to that? You have Big Bay Point, which sold for big bucks. They moved out to Oro, bought up all the farmland. Nobody could compete with the person because they had millions of dollars. So what about the ordinary farm people? No, they're just left out. So we have urban sprawl, creep and crawl, pollution. Yeah, we're going to pollute the farmland, the good farmland. There's lots of land in northern Ontario, high-speed trains nowadays, good highways, but no, we got to pollute the Lake Simcoe watershed and pollute the good farmland. So Doug Ford, he washes his hands of actually called land use planning. It's all about money. Kevin O'Leary, there's something about money, make money. Yes, that's all fine and dandy, but what about the environment? What about the real long-term future here? We have to look at Rob Black. He has critical ground. And he spoke at Orangeville, and he said there's oil and gas well pollution, dump pollution. He never mentioned about building on the good farmland in southern Ontario or Quebec. In Quebec, you don't dare build on the good farmland. Here in Ontario, hey, it's a commodity. Destroy it. Hey, we make money out of it. What about future generations? What about Canada? I grow azuki beans. They go to Japan. White pea beans, they go to Britain for pork and beans. Non-GMO corn for processing. Identity-based, you know, preserved soybeans. Hard red winter wheat, it goes to Midland for bread flour. So, but as far as the government policies, whether it's federal, provincial, or local municipalities, they're all just, they all nice lip service to the farmers. But really, the policies are putting the farm people off of the farmland. And for example, the likes of the province, 75% of the property taxes are paid if you rent it to a farmer. So everybody buys up farmland and wants to live in the lifestyle and whatnot. So we have some real serious problems. And you have all these deals around Lake Simcoe. Across from the Uptown Grove School, it's a wetland, but they call it Highland Development. Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority approves it. Meanwhile, a buddy farmer of mine, it wasn't wetland, but they went after him and charged him. They had the OPP there, one car. Somebody said, get out of there, and they called for a second car. They could stop us here. So Doug Ford and Fremer Wynn, they don't go for land use planning. They go for whatever suits them politically. So we do have problems. We have problems federally. But no, it's just who's going to pay for all this infrastructure? Look at the Rammer Road corridor. Yes, it's been on the go for years. And no, it's all talk, spend some money, and people buy up the farmland and want to make money out of it. But nothing happens. So anyways, yes, we've got some serious problems in Canada. We got serious problems locally. vested interest, land use, that's what it is. Make money, short-term money. And where are we headed? It's a Ponzi scheme. It's going to collapse, as far as I can see. Thank you. Have a good one.
And if I can just have your address again, please? Your address again, please?
Oh, 1908 Concession 10 RR3 Breckham.
Thank you.
LOK 1VO.
Thank you. We'll open the podium back up for our next questions or comments. Not seeing any, I will turn to the clerk to advise if there are any online.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. There is no commenters online right now.
And at this time, do any members of council have comments regarding? Counselor Thompson? Counselor Thompson, before you begin, I would like to remind council that this is not a debate this evening. We have five minutes each, just as our our president did, so we've opened the floor up. our president did, so we've opened the floor up for five minutes.
Your worship, Mayor Coglan, members of council, staff and distinguished guests. It's wonderful to see so many out tonight to participate in this new and exciting chapter in the township of Springwater. First, I want you all to know that I'll be voting next week in favor of the boundary adjustment agreement with the city of Barry. I recognize this decision will not please everyone. It was made with great care, weighing all perspectives and the long-term best interests of our community. The people that I have reached out to and met with individually to help me make my decision includes MPP Doug Downey, MPP Brian Sanderson, Mayor and Deputy Mayor of the City of Barry, Mayor Andrew Sloan from Central Elgin, Provincial Land Facilitators Dan Matheson and Jeff Schelling, and of course, our amazing staff. Thank you to our staff for your work, patience and professionalism. You have been a ray of sunshine to me through this entire process. I attended the plenary session last month hosted by the province and have met with residents, landowners, landowner groups in the affected areas to get their perspective. I have participated in the many consultant reports and legal opinions. We have spent hundreds of thousands of your tax dollars seeking professional advice. Often, as you know, these consultants and experts have come to different conclusions with the very same information. I have tracked down the participants on both sides of the Innisville-Berry land deal to draw on their experience and advice and explore why that deal had such a bad result for the town of Innisville. Throughout this lengthy process, two messages have been made abundantly clear to all members of council. First, we have been told there is a high likelihood of a boundary adjustment. And second, we will get a better result for our residents if we participate in the process. In my opinion, it was a huge mistake that we did not follow this tax-funded legal advice from the very beginning. There are over a hundred and twenty-five million reasons to present and approve this deal to our residents next week. We'll receive about twenty-three million in compensation, an amount almost equal to our annual tax-funded operating budget. Staff also has confirmed we'll be losing a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in tax revenue in the land deal. That equates to about seventeen dollars a year or a dollar forty-two cents a month increase on the average tax bill. If you account for the savings of nine hundred thousand dollars a year, we've been paying Barry for gaining access to their recreation programs. And that we will be no longer plowing the hill on Old Second South that cost us over ten thousand dollars a year last year to maintain. That reduces that number to five dollars and sixty-seven cents a year or forty-seven cents a month. Hardly an amount to be, have any concern about. If we invest only ten percent of the money we receive, the return will easily cover any lost income avoiding any future tax increases caused by this event. We'll also be receiving over a hundred million in water and wastewater services for our Upper Bayfield Street corridor. After careful consideration, it is my opinion that Barry servicing these lands offers the best path forward for the Sadland and Remington Group projects. An opinion that is shared by both of these developers and their professional planning teams. It is critical for us that these two developments stay in Springwater as they'll create millions in tax revenue and development charges for our community. Thank you, Mayor Coglan, for your integrity and hard work in keeping these lands out of the boundary expansion. As I know, they were in real jeopardy of going to Barry. I love the concept of the Little Lake Conservancy and the Linear Park. The protection of these wetlands will pay dividends for future generations. A concept that was endorsed by the Simcoe County Green Belt Coalition when they were here in our chambers last week. Finally, the compensation and support for our own economic development included in this deal is long overdue. We will finally be able to change the narrative that this council created from spring water being neither business-friendly or investment-ready to open for business and investment-ready. We will now have a real chance at a true maiden spring water solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Tessa Garwitz. Thank you, Counselor Thompson. I can turn to other members. Counselor Fisher? Oh, Counselor Deputy Cabral. If you would like to speak now, I was my intention that you could speak second to me, but just in your position, but if you want to speak now, that's or now. Counselor Alexander?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Coglan, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. It's great to see so many people out here. Obviously, very important issue. Bear with me, I've just made some random notes here, so I'm gonna try and touch on a couple things. First off, I do truly want to level set on the facts. There have been lots of references to, we've done many different reports, had many different opinions. And there's been certain people that have picked from one or the other, but not looking at the Folsom state to where we are right now. So first off, the facilitation process, we have always been at the table and we have always been involved with the provincial facilitator. We have never backed away from that. We have backed away from direct negotiations with Mayor Nuttall for specific reasons, but we have always been working with the province and the facilitator. So I think that's important for everyone to understand. We've always been at that table. The second piece, what I've heard a lot here from different developers, and just to be clear, I understand why we want to do all of these developments. I think I'm for all of them. The part that I'm having an issue with is what I keep hearing is Barry has proven they can serve us and Springwater cannot. So factually, this has not happened. We have multiple reports about, from this annexation, and there are no technical reports around the wastewater from the city of Barry. Nothing. We, however, have had through our partners, partnership, a long-term partnership with the Midhurst Landowners Group, studies that, numerous studies, studies that not only Midhurst Landowners Group came to us with, but then were vetted through Ainsley Group, our engineer and our staff, to eventually get to a position where everybody was aligned that this was a viable option to service a maiden spring water solution. So I think that's important to note because we actually have no information from Barry saying they can do it. The timelines, the studies they need to do, nothing. As well as we actually don't have a cross-border servicing agreement. It's in a line, on a framework we're supposed to do to say, nothing to see here, we'll, we'll look at this later. So there's no timeline, cost associated, there's no details at all. So I think that's important for people to understand. Lastly, the piece I'm gonna touch on, there's two things. So one, a gentleman came up and talked about council being in a tough spot. Absolutely, we are. I certainly never anticipated this is, this would be what I would be discussing when I decided that I wanted to run for council. Whether or not I'm in a tough spot, I would say this has been incredibly stressful, so much information thrown at us. But I actually don't feel like I'm in a tough spot because I've spent the time researching, looking at the facts and always what I've continued to do what I think is right, which is stand up for the residents of Springwater. And I understand there's people out here that want to see this go forward. But I would ask every single person that sits there and says, I want to see this go forward, that isn't actually profiting from it because they're selling their land or developer and that's fine. But just the other regular members of this township from Hillsdale, Minising, Elmville. If this was in your backyard, if it was your property that was about to be abutted on or you were about to get taken over by the city of Barry, would you be okay with this? Or would you want your council to fight for you? Because quite honestly, and again, I'm not saying there will be no annexation, but twenty-two million dollars to give up Springwater's future, that is not a win-win solution and it is not something that I can ever support.
Thank you. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out tonight. I think you need to ask yourself, who does this benefit? Well, if you're a regular tax-paying citizen, it's not you. It doesn't benefit you. Fifteen thousand dollars per acre, I heard, I think it was the third speaker of the night, pushed for the best possible outcome. I challenge you, is fifteen thousand dollars per acre suitable? Is that the best possible outcome? I know it's not. What do we stand to lose for Springwater? A hundred and fifty-eight thousand is the figure that's thrown out in front of us. It's very little. Well, initially, we lose that, but we lose all future tax revenue as well. We lose our development charges on land that we would develop, right? We also will, after the twenty-two thousand, twenty-two million dollars that's spread over five years, which is not, to counselor, to the counselor's point, it's not a lot of money. Your taxes will go up. Trust me, your county and municipal taxes will go up to support the same services that you enjoy right now. It's been said that many counselors or four members of council constantly say no. That's actually not true. We've actually focused on a made-in-spring-water solution where we service ourselves and we collect the tax revenue. We can keep everything here, and that is a far better solution. I'm saying no to the Barry proposal because, as I've been quoted tonight, it's a terrible deal. I want to move forward to the made-in-spring-water solution where we keep taxes here and we keep taxes low. Lack of public consultation, that was raised tonight, very astute of the resident. Indigenous communities, they've not been consulted. Agricultural community, as a matter of fact, one gentleman called it lip service. Absolutely right. It's lip service for the agricultural community. We bring people in. Another thing, we bring you in on the eighth of the month and we're about to vote on the fifteenth? Seems awfully rushed to me, doesn't it? When we hear that we've been doing this for a year and a half, this is the first time you're brought in to talk about it. So I don't call that public consultation. One other astute person called it checking off a box tonight. That's exactly what I feel as a counselor it is. It's the illusion of choice. It's not a choice. Legal opinions, we've received a few. Many of you know about this. Our legal opinion states that this is not a good deal. Forty-nine, forty-six, forty-nine pages of a lawyer telling us this is not good for us. And that's one lawyer. As a matter of fact, at the beginning of the meeting today, Alex Lusti brought this to us. Questioning whether or not we can actually move forward with this under strong mayor's powers. I think that's a very real question that we need to be asking ourselves. I want to appeal to the people of Barry. This also isn't good for you. You're gonna take over this land, but do you think you're gonna service it for free? Your services will, will be expanded upon. I always hear about the Barry police budget. Do you think you're not gonna police that land? I think Barry residents need to start asking themselves, is this good for me? I can tell you, if I lived in Barry, it's not good for you. Another thing I want to bring people's attention to, and I'm running out of time here, is a statement from the County of Simcoe today. This should be very, because you're taxpayers in the County of Simcoe as well. I want to read a few things for you in my remaining time. As previously expressed, the county is not supportive of the current terms of the forced annexation plan as currently outlined. I go to another paragraph. The removal of the economic lands will have long-term tax rate implications on the county residents across the region, that's sixteen municipalities. The loss of this economic revenue will directly affect the county's ability to pay for vital services and infrastructure. It is also, it may also stall planned investments like Lake Simcoe Regional Airport, which is a major economic driver for our region. You see, folks, something is seriously wrong here. When some politicians push for us, push for something that is so obviously bad for you, you need to seriously question why they are doing it. On the fifteenth and in the next election, I'd like you to take a look at whoever is running and seriously hold them to account. Where did they stand on this issue? Did they stand with you as a resident, your tax dollars, your services? Or did they make a land deal with Barry for a chintzy amount of money? Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. You're a hard act to follow, just saying. I'm gonna make this very brief, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for everybody that came out tonight. I'm thrilled that you're passionate about this and you have opinions and concerns, just like we do. But it's not often that we get such a great turnout. So thank you so, so much for, for saying exactly how you feel. This is a difficult and divided and damaging process. It has damaged relationships and neighbors. And it's been stressful, like Counselor Alexander mentioned, very stressful. I think there isn't a person up here that doesn't want to do what is, what, in what they feel the best interest of the Springwater residents. That is my goal to do was, and that's what I was elected for, to do what is in the best interest of Springwater residents and Springwater township. Our lawyer has said it's a bad deal. So it is a bad deal, not for the corporation, but it is a bad deal for Springwater residents. That has to be considered. It has to be considered. We put a motion forward in February regarding the expansion of the Midhurst Secondary Plan. That was in effect for a very long time. When it was put into effect, we were tasked with creating and supporting the Midhurst Secondary Plan. That is written in law. So as a council, we unanimously passed that motion to extend the lands out to the four hundred corridor, which would include the Forbes interchange at Highway four hundred. Those lands are the future of Springwater Township. Those lands will bring you millions in taxation. It's not today's hundred and eighty thousand dollars in taxation that we're gonna lose. It's the hundred and fifty to three hundred million dollars in taxation we're gonna lose when that land gets developed. Please don't underestimate what that means to the county because it's, all the municipalities in the county are, are focused on that land as part of their economic development. It has to be part of our economic development. So, and I, I understand that not everybody's land is over that way, but that is a significant part of our future. We cannot give that away. The other pieces is the Bayfield Street corridor. That was meant to be a hub of sorts. And we've had Bayfield Street corridor studies done, the counties had Bayfield Street corridor studies done. And that shows that it really could be a main street. Infrastructure at the top of Bayfield Street, however, is critical in making that development complete. There's no incentive to run a pipe up Bayfield Street if it's not going somewhere. It has to go to the top and then it can feed all of the development along the Bayfield Street corridor. I'm excited for that. I think that that's fabulous for our community. I know there are plans for shopping and commercial sort of developments along there that have been paused. You know, I've heard even fast food and coffee. So I, again, would love to see that too, but there is no incentive for that infrastructure unless it can reach also the top of Bayfield Street. I support all the development and I always have. So let's just make that clear too. I always have. And, but most importantly, when I started on council, I was also advised by somebody I highly respect that if you follow good planning policy, if you follow good land use policy, you can't go wrong. And so I have always tried to do that and I will continue to do that. The land use is, and compatible land uses most importantly. So I'm not gonna get into previous decisions of previous councils and all of that, but just know that, that will be what I base my, my decision on. Thank you.
Counselor Garwin?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I want to express my thanks to the members of the public who have taken the time to be here this evening. Your presence, your interest and your willingness to engage in this important conversation are deeply appreciated. It is through participation like yours that we ensure our decisions are grounded in community input. Many times around this table, we've spoken about the significance of this matter and the critical role public consultation plays in any decision-making process. It is about trust, accountability and making sure our community understands what is being discussed within these chambers. These conversations affect not just today, but the long-term future of Springwater. I also recognize a consensus on a path forward may never be reached. Each of us, whether sitting around this council table or living across this beautiful township, comes to this issue with our own values, perspectives and reasons for supporting or opposing the proposed boundary adjustment. or opposing the proposed boundary adjustment. The diversity of thought is not only expected, but also healthy. It reflects the real conversations happening at kitchen tables and at community events across our municipality. If it were as simple as saying no, this matter would have been resolved years ago. The complexity of this situation is real, legal, financial, emotional, historical, and it is precisely why it has taken time, energy, and careful thought. None of us have navigated a process quite like this before. And while we may differ on our visions for the future, we must always strive to do so with mutual respect. There is no place in this conversation for accusations. Springwater has a bright and promising future, and regardless of where each of us stands on this issue, one thing is very clear, we all deeply care about this township. That shared commitment is what should unite us even when we disagree. Please know that I hear your feedback from all perspectives. I understand the emotion, the frustration, and the hopes that are wrapped up in this process. I understand what's at stake, and I want to be clear, this should never be about politics. This decision is far more important than any one political position or individual. It's about protecting what makes sense for Springwater and preparing us for the challenges in the future. At the same time, the Province of Ontario has been very clear about their intentions, not only in communication with this council, but in numerous public letters, and ignoring this contributes to the spread of misinformation. Over the past many months, we've seen a great deal of discussion here in council, across our community, in print, and across social media. One consistent theme that I've heard nearly every day is this, change is difficult, particularly when it affects something as fundamental as our municipal boundaries, which have remained unchanged for decades. But should change become inevitable, people expect and deserve that we fight for the best possible outcome for Springwater, and that is what I have been doing and continue to intend to do. Tonight, I choose not to focus on the divisions or the uncertainties, I choose to stay optimistic. Council has had multiple, and I mean multiple, opportunities to voice their perspective, and I know these conversations will continue. Some may feel we need more information, but I also want to be clear, this council and our community has received more reports, maps, and peer-reviewed studies, along with expert opinions than I can count. The information is here, the responsibility now lies in how we use it, how we interpret it, act on it, and explain it to the public. I can see both sides of the coin because I sat across from residents at kitchen tables and coffee shops, listening to their feedback, their questions, and their ideas. No one is asking for annexation. No one is cheering for a boundary adjustment. What I hear consistently is a desire to protect Springwater, a desire to ensure we don't follow the path of other municipalities who thought a simple no was the safest route, only to face unintended consequences later. Let me close by saying this, there is nothing easy about a boundary adjustment. It is not just one line on a map. I think about this issue when I wake up in the morning and I carry it with me at night, and I know I'm not alone in that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Coughlin, through you, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. This has been a long, hard journey, I'll tell you right now. As a matter of fact, based on one of the speakers that was here before us, who also did speak at the City of Berry's Public House with respect to an MZO that was turned down a number of years ago, I was on that council at the time. What I try and do is research. When I didn't know what an MZO was, I went out and I found out what an MZO was, when it should be used and when it shouldn't be used, because what it tends to do is circumvent the normal planning process for a municipality. And it gives the person who gets that endorsement the opportunity to go to the province and have rezoning done, even if it doesn't meet the criteria for rezoning at the municipal level. And the reason for the MZO is because planning staff would never be able to support something that was outside of our official plan or our zoning. So in that particular case, a couple of pieces were missing. One was that the property was A1 agricultural land and that it was in a designated green buffer zone that Springwater Township had had for years and years and years. Not the right place for industrial land when everything else around there was probably going to be residential. And with respect to the potential industry that was going to be there, I think it's also important to note that, yes, they did leave the city of Berry, they went to Oremadonte, they went to an industrial-zoned area and did not receive any concessions from Oremadonte to go there. We have industrial land in Springwater Township that is very suitable for industrial employment lands, and that's what the planning process is all about. That's what the Planning Act is all about. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up to speed, just so that folks know that, because this isn't about what Springwater might get from this boundary adjustment financially. This is about what Springwater Township is going to lose over the course of the next 20 or 30 years. And I will just make a few quotes from the county level. They said, "We cannot, however, support the unclear agendas and mandates that has led us to the most recent versions of the vast and rushed proposed annexation and mapping." Rushed, it certainly has been. This is the only public meeting we've held. "The process seemingly has had little or no regard for regional imports or desires provided into the process in mapping. The currently proposed outcomes have the potential to negatively impact the county's economy, the environment, and the future county revenues that would help offset our residents' hard-earned tax dollars, residents in all 16 municipalities, including Springwater Township. Any lands developed outside the county's municipal boundary within the separated city of Berry, which is where they would be, provide no direct tax revenue benefit to the townships or the county." So this boundary adjustment would not only affect Springwater Township, it would affect Severn, it would affect Wasaga Beach, Clearview, all of the people who live within Simcoe County. This is not an issue only impacting municipalities involved, it involves every taxpayer in Simcoe County. And they feel that they can work with our partners to address reasonable needs for each without this type of vast land-taking and impact to future revenues, tax rates, municipal services, and the health of the county's economic future. Now, I only have a minute left, but there were three options available in the Hampson Report, but the only one that was selected is the one that benefits Berry for the most part through an expansion. "The scenario sacrifices regional fairness, weakens Springwater's financial position, and ignores legal warnings about unforeseeable risks. Transfers. Springwater commissioned legal advice from Loopson Nixta to assess these risks. Accepting a single municipality expansion without binding protections will permanently shift assessment, development charges, and future tax revenues away from Springwater while leaving the township exposed to legacy costs and service obligations." They talked about fiscal loss and fairness, and when we talk about some of the dollar values, lost economic activity over 20 years is estimated to be between $150 million and $400 million. We'd lose that. Municipal property tax revenues, 20 years, between $50 million and $160 million in property tax receipts. Lost development charges over 20 years, $10 million to $40 million in DC revenues alone. Combined, we're talking anywhere between $212 million at the lowest end and $615 million at the high end. So it's not what we're going to gain, folks, it's what we're going to lose. And that's why I'm struggling with this very, very much, and I lost a lot of sleep over it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to be with here with us. I understand that this topic invokes strong feelings, and I want to acknowledge the comments we've heard about growth and the future of our community. Thank you for showing an interest in shaping Springwater's future. I'd like to acknowledge the members of council and staff who've been deeply committed to this process for the last few years and have worked diligently in the best interest of Springwater. The framework represents a proactive and locally-led approach that demonstrates our shared commitment to partnership and collaborative solutions. This proposal aligns with long-term projections for the population and job growth in both Springwater and Berry through 2051. It secures the residential and serviced employment lands that are necessary to meet our future needs. It represents a solution that aligns with the provincial planning goals, supports economic opportunity, fosters future, a future built through regional cooperation and innovation. It involves compromise, a word that is often foreign in politics, ensuring that growth happens in a way that is strategic, responsible, sustainable, and beneficial to our community, achieving a locally-driven solution rather than one that is provincially imposed. It ensures mutual benefit for all parties. Together, we aim to preserve and enhance Little Lake Conservation Area, a place for serenity for generations to come. It unlocks regional lands that best serve our hospital, cancer centers, colleges, and universities. This proposal highlights the importance of economic development. The proposed employment corridor, which includes Springwater land, is a transformative opportunity for our community. It will help drive economic growth, attract new investment, and strengthen our connection to larger provincial opportunities, including the Ring of Fire, positioning our community as an economic hub. One of the most important aspects is that Springwater will have access to vital water and wastewater servicing infrastructure, which is crucial for providing our community with seniors' living options for retirement right through hospice care. It will also help us provide diverse and itangible housing, promote job creation, and support community development. These negotiations have been extensive and rigorous. However, I'm proud of the work that has gone into it and many positive outcomes. Measuring measures to protect landowners whose properties will become part of the city of Berry, the creation of a buffer zone to minimize the impacts on Springwater residents, which will also serve as a linear park and trail system, including a connection from Little Lake to the conservation and that nine-mile portage trail. Throughout the process, we have worked diligently with the Office of the Land Provincial Facilitators. I would like to thank Mr. Schelling and Mr. Matheson for ensuring the framework reflects our local priorities, local knowledge, and local values. I would also like to thank Mayor Nuttall and the city of Berry for their collaboration and compromise in reaching a mutually beneficial framework. Thank you again to everyone who came out this evening and showing an interest in Springwater's future.
At this point?
Thank you to all participated in the public meeting with respect to the proposed boundary adjustment and for showing an interest in the matter. This matter will be considered by council at its regular meeting on October 15, 2025. Council at this time may have a mover and seconder to adjourn the public meeting. Counselor Garwood, Deputy Cabral, that this public meeting held under Sections 1, 7, 3, 3 of the Municipal Act on the Proposed Boundary Adjustment does now adjourn at 9:13 PM. All those in favor? That has carried. May have a mover and seconder for the confirmation bylaw, please. Counselor Moore and Thompson, that bylaw 2025 to confirm and adopt the proceedings of council at the special meeting held on October 8, 2025, listed here and be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. All those in favor? That has carried, and a mover and seconder for a German, please. Counselors Alexander and Garwood, that the special meeting of the Township of Springwater does now adjourn at 9:14 PM to meet again in the regular meeting of October 15, 2025 at 6:30 PM. All those in favor? And that has carried. Thank you.